I would like to call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, this meeting is being video recorded and broadcast live. First up, our administrative items. The first one is approval not required A and R for plat 42, lots 1, T, 7, and 8, file number 23-023A, request by applicant for endorsement of a two-lot plan of land located at 82 High Ridge Road, assessors map 42, lot 7, 8, -2, and 1T.
We're actually gonna, can we move that item to the bottom? Because the public hearing coincides with that one for flexible frontage.
That's 82?
Yep.
82 High Ridge?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, we will put that on the table until we get to the end of the administrative items.
Excuse me, sir, I'm having a hard time understanding what you're saying. Can you speak up a little bit more?
I will try. Valerie, is this broadcast in the room?
Yeah, I could have.
It could be me. I've got a little problem with the speaker.
Is it here? I think we could turn that off. Because I don't think it was.
Oh, yeah, I'll shut that off. No, no.
Now, how do you, I've never had the privilege of coming here before.
Yep.
I've been in Westport almost 50 years. Now, you mentioned Derek and Julia Reposa, 82 High Ridge Road. I live across from them.
Yep.
73 High Ridge Road. And I've been there for 35 years.
Okay, we're gonna discuss that at 6:15.
Okay. That's what I'm trying to understand. How do you perceive?
Yep. There's a, I don't know, you didn't bring any agendas for the pop-up?
No, but if you want mine, you can have it.
Yes, why don't you give it to him?
Okay.
He can follow along.
You can have this. I have notes on it, disregard.
Okay, the second item, B, is approval not required, A and R, AP 63, lot 11-13, Saudi and Deval Pond, file number 23-026A, request by applicant for endorsement of a two-lot plan of land located at Zero Deval Pond Drive, assessors map 63, lots 11-13.
Good evening, members of the planning board. Sean Leach for Northeast Engineers, representing Andrew and Peter Kaplan regarding an A and R plan for the lots as mentioned. I believe you have a plan in front of you. This plan basically is technically an A and R plan, but what it is, is combining some lot lines along walls and along things along that line for the two abutting properties to purchase. These properties were created back in 1929. I have the plan here, the ancient plan here, on Elise Michelle Way, is what it's known as. And they're updated lots. They're on a way, and lots were created, and the houses have been there since, obviously, the 20s. What we're doing is combining lots 11, 12, and 13, excuse me, 11, and 12, and 13 into lots to be conveyed to abutting property owners.
Well, my plan only goes up to lot 10.
Well, yeah, that's because the assessors' numbers are different from the lot numbers that are on the plan. Don't ask me why. I have no idea.
Okay.
But it's the same lots. I don't know if you have the plan up on your screens, but you'll see that it's the same type of configuration for that particular way that's been in existence prior to zoning.
So...
Essentially, we're not creating any new lots. We're actually condensing the number from three to two, and then those two lots are gonna be combined with abutting lots.
So, I don't know what the AP stands for.
Assessors flat.
63, lot 11, and 12, and 13. And you're gonna, so what are we doing here?
Well, 11 and 12 are being combined into one lot to be conveyed to the abutter to, which would be the south, and then lot 13 is gonna be conveyed to the abutter to the north. Essentially, we were creating parcels that are gonna be conveyed to other non-conforming lots, but not making anything less non-conforming. We're actually making them more conforming.
So, I may be a little dense, but which lots on this plan are there?
I believe they're lots 3, 4, and 5. Actually, I think it's part of lot 4, 5, and 6. I take it back, because I think one was split up several years ago for an A and R plan on the far south. Actually, this should've been combined at that time.
Automatically?
Yeah.
So, the stone wall sort of matched up, the stone walls on the...
Correct.
On the plan, and the stone walls here.
Correct.
Yep.
Yep.
I see the stone wall. So, the area on this map are in rods, and I can't figure out where it's put there.
A square rod is about 220 square feet, give or take.
Oh, that helps a lot.
Yeah. So, if you wanna do the math.
So, on this, on the plan that you've drawn up?
Yes.
It shows lot 11, which is a skinny little lot.
Yeah, which is part of lot number 3, I believe. You'll see the wall there that goes between 3 and 4. That lot was split in half several years ago, and the remainder of 3 should've been combined at that time, but it wasn't for some reason.
Yeah, so it has 40 feet of frontage on your plan.
Right.
And on this plan, it has 90.
Right. 50 feet was given to the abutter to the south several years ago.
So, that was combined with two?
Correct.
Or the old two.
And actually, this is gonna be combined with that lot also. That is the intent here, to go up to the stone wall, second stone wall.
So, on this map, 2 and 3 will become one? I mean, 3 and 4?
Yes. Yes.
So, Sean, so when they, when they cut that lot off last time?
Yep.
It was buildable before?
Correct.
So, this piece right now?
It's unbuildable, because it was altered after zoning, so you have, what you had was an unbuildable parcel.
Now, what happens if they combine it back?
If you combine it back, it still is unbuildable, because it's a nonconforming...
Now, it just stays onto that one lot?
Correct. It's a nonconforming lot, and it's being combined with a nonconforming lot. Still nonconforming area-wise, have plenty of frontage, but it will not meet the requirements for area, and it would have to go to ZBA if they were chose to build on it.
But it already has a house?
Well, the one to the south, yes, it does. What happens is, if they couldn't take this lot that I'm giving them and say it's a buildable lot, is what it comes down to.
Right.
So, if they, so the new lot that was 2 and 3?
Correct.
Right on here, originally?
Correct.
Will have enough frontage, but not enough area?
Not even close.
So, if the house burns down, they can't rebuild it?
Oh, no, they can rebuild. On the zoning, you can rebuild if it's a catastrophic event.
Right.
But you have, I think you have one year to make constructive improvement.
But if you tear it down, you're out of lot.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna happen, but...
Well, actually, I think if you, if you go to the building inspector and ask for building permit, that includes tearing it down, would he give you a building?
Yes. If it got wiped out in a hurricane or something?
I mean, if he decides, this is a rotten structure, I wanna rebuild it?
Correct.
He could rebuild it?
Yes.
And he could expand it?
Expanding would have to go to ZBA. You're expanding a nonconforming use.
What about with Title V on it? Like, if you wanted to expand it, another bedroom, you'd still have to meet Title V?
Yep, everything, anything, well, Conservation Board of Health-wise, you don't get any relief. You only get certain zoning relief if it is a catastrophic event, it burns down. But if you expand above the footprint, it's expansion on a nonconforming lot, and you have to go for a finding for the ZBA to see that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. Correct. There are other things involved here, there's conservation, because you're within 100 feet of the pond, so...
Okay. Sean, in terms of the access here, the road, it looks like the, well, what's the property line on the east side, supposed to follow a 15-foot wide right-of-way? But am I right that the actual traveled way is a little further east?
That's correct. The traveled way is not located within that plan right-of-way.
It's, so is it on somebody else's property?
Nope. Right now, it all belongs to the Kaplans, and at some point, they're gonna codify that by giving everybody an easement as to where it is, and actually widen that 15-foot way at easement to include the traveled way. They don't wanna see it turned into a 40-foot highway.
So, right now, it's just a dirt road?
It's a gravel road, very narrow, 12 feet, 12 to 14 feet wide.
But there's a stone wall?
On one side.
So, if they expand the right-of-way, they're gonna have to demolish the stone wall?
No.
They're gonna go on the other side of, east of the stone wall?
Correct. What they're gonna, what they, I think the plan is, and I don't know this for sure, but is to make it wide enough to incorporate the existing traveled way, so they don't have to move it to the, should they sell off the other properties, the big properties they go up to, you probably know it as Nathan Kaplan Way, you've probably seen that subdivision plan, they wanna make sure that everything, there's no legal title issues as far as access to and from these properties. I mean, they've been using, obviously, these properties for a long time, and this right-of-way for a long time.
So, the traveled way is between these properties and the stone wall, or on the other side of the stone wall?
It's, I think, it's between the stone wall and these properties. There's a stone wall that runs north-south, parallel to the pond, and there's another stone wall that runs along the way coming east-west.
So, according to your plan, it looks like there's about 25 feet between the properties and the stone wall?
A little bit.
30 feet?
Yeah, probably, probably. Yeah, in some cases, yeah.
Yeah, but the aerial picture that you got here with the, with the overlay?
I think that's...
Doesn't look like the traveled way is east of the stone wall?
Yeah, I don't know if that's exactly correct, because it's a steep hill, and you use an aerial like that, you get a distortion as to where the actual location of the way is. But it's in, within that way. That dash line you see on my plan is where the way is physically, we physically located the way. You see, there's a little rounding where it comes down from the T, but it's where it goes out to Nathan Kaplan Way, or the extension of Robert Street, or whatever you wanna call it, that it kinda meanders away from the plan right-of-way that you have in front of you.
And it's a dead end?
Yes. On both ends.
It's a T, and it goes?
Yep.
It doesn't look like it goes very far to the right.
No.
Well...
Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
I am ready.
I move to approve the endorsement of the plan entitled AP Lot 63, lots 11 through 13, Saudi and Deval Ponds, Westport, Mass, because the plan complies with provisions of MGL Chapter 41, Section 81-3P, and I would add, in their consolidation, they reduce the extent of nonconformity.
I second it.
Any more discussion? I would, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. While you're hanging around. Next is C, Fisher Road, Form E, modification to definitive subdivision plan.
Anyone here for that? No? Okay, that's fine. So, that is Stacy Lane. The developer is requesting two minor modifications to the definitive subdivision plan. One of them is for a bump out for the location of the fire tank in order to allow closer access to the tank and standpipe for the fire department's equipment. The bump out will consist of removing any topsoil in front of the tank and replacing with approved roadway, 12-inch gravel thick to match the thickness of the roadway gravel. The bump out will be paved with asphalt with the berm following the outline of the bump out. The bump out will have some pitch to allow the water to drain towards the catch basin and prevent any icing conditions in the winter, and prevent any damage to the roadway berm during snow removal operations, either by private entities or town-owned equipment when the roadway is finally accepted. I've discussed this modification with the fire department and with Derek from SW Coal, and because they were having difficulties earlier this summer and late spring of drawing water out from the subsurface water tank, there had to be a little bit of modification to be done in order to get the equipment closer to the tank, so it can draw water. There was a successful testing, so it's all set, but that modification basically needs to take place in order for the subdivision to, to have adequate water in the event of a fire. And the second modification is for the retaining wall when you first go into the development. It's supposed to be a three-foot retaining wall to the left-hand side, and pretty much go, go all the way down until the turn for the first lot. And what they would wanna do instead is have that retaining wall three feet, but then grade it into the topography of the land. Derek and I went out to the site and discussed this in early, early summer, and he didn't see a problem with it, and that is in his report. I don't see an issue with it. I think it would look fine. I don't think there's a need to have the retaining wall go, keep going three feet if it can just slope into the topography. The application for this was not timestamped by the town clerk, but I would suggest that the planning board still make the endorsement of these two modifications, and we don't need for other month, which is why I'm suggesting that it take place now, and then the applicant can adequately get their application stamped tomorrow with the town clerk, and then upon the complete application, I would, I would give them the certificate of modification. But I would hold it until I get the, the application timestamped.
I mean, do we have a, a plan that shows the bump out?
We do not have a plan that shows the bump out.
What are they bumping up? The road?
Yeah. They have to bump out the road a little bit, so that it can get the fire equipment closer to the water tank.
It's in this area?
Yep.
Yeah, so it's, so it's, it's between the standpipe and the catch basin, you're bumping the road out. How far?
I'm not sure exactly how far. I went and saw it. It's not that much. It's a, it's a few feet.
So, they're just widening the road, and they're gonna keep the other, other side of the road where it is?
Yeah, it's just in front of the, the water, the subsurface water tank.
Does this bump out fall within the right-of-way, or does it not fall within the right-of-way?
No, no. It's bumped out.
No, no, what?
It's not in the right-of-way.
So, we're changing lot lines?
I don't think we're changing a lot line.
No, it's, they changed the street, they're changing the lot.
I can speak to this. I wasn't aware of this.
If you could come up and identify yourself?
Yes. Tom Morris with Zenith Consulting Engineers. We had done the Stacy Lane subdivision. I wasn't aware of this modification, because they didn't have us do any plans for it, but I have seen where they're doing that bump out. It is within the right-of-way. It's outside of the street, the pavement, but it's inside the right-of-way, so there will be no modifications to the property lines.
That's what I meant.
Good. And are they gonna leave the catch basin where it is, or put it further towards the standpipe?
Keeping it where it is, as far as I've been told. I don't think they're changing anything else. They were just adding, basically, just a little turnoff, like you see in front of a mailbox, like a core mailbox.
And I assume it'd be properly graded, so it drains to the catch basin?
Yeah, they're putting a berm, so if there's, and grade it also, that would go into the catch basin.
So, I assume this would be part of the ASBIL when they send it to us?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll certainly pick that up.
I don't think this requires a modification of the subdivision.
I mean, by the subdivision rules and regs, any modification to the definitive subdivision plan requires a Form E, so...
Okay, this would be a very minor, as long as it, you know, you know, extending the pavement within the right-of-way, so it, the truck can get next to the fire tank, I think is, in my opinion, certainly okay. If the bump out then changed the layout of the street, then, then that's a different story.
So, the, the fire cistern and the standpipes, are they in the road right-of-way?
There's an easement for those.
But it's on one of the lots?
Yes, at least partially. I think it might be partially within the right-of-way.
And the tank's in the easement?
I can't remember, there is an easement that goes out into the lot, but I think the tank might be kinda straddling the right-of-way and the easement. I don't remember how far exactly they put it in.
Because we just had another one now.
Yeah, and the easement goes to the benefit of who?
It's for the fire department to be able to access the water tank.
I know what it's for, but I mean, is it written in these properties?
It will have to be in the deed.
There is an easement that is for the benefit of the fire department?
I don't know if it's in there currently, but it'll have to be.
It'll have to be?
Yeah.
So, do we wanna see this on paper first, or?
Okay. I'm okay with saying okay to the easement. We're gonna have to get it ASBIL, but they're also gonna have to give us the homeowners' association stuff, and they should give us a copy of the easement with, for the benefit of the fire department.
And it will, I mean, they, they should put it in the deed, and I expect they will, but at least it will be shown on the plan of record, so that can be referenced either way.
But it really should go on the deed for those properties?
I agree.
And we should get a copy of that?
Sure.
And a copy to the fire department?
This is to release the lots, they've come this before, so I think we should know that.
Yeah, I think if we release those lots, then I think that, before you sell them, I think you should provide us with the deed, copy of the deed showing the easement to the fire department.
Sure.
I'm pretty sure the deeds probably aren't made up for these lots, since the houses are all built, and the people are waiting to close.
I would guess, but I haven't seen them.
I would guess, but it doesn't work for him to go back and say, is that easement on those deeds?
Yeah, if you could do that, would be greatly appreciated.
So, for these lots that they're asking to release of?
They're all built already.
Really? Under, under, the covenant?
Are they built by the developer?
Yes. They just don't have...
They aren't released, so he can't sell them.
They don't have an OC.
Well, then, you need an engineer's statement, that they've, that all the conditions have been met, was it Form R or something like that? Has to be issued before we can...
Yeah, we have, we have to release, because I don't think they have a surety. I think they have, so we have to release them before you can, I don't know what comes first, the CO or the release, but you need both, right?
I think the release would come first. Because Ralph won't give a CO until everything else is squared away.
We're not gonna release the lots before the roads, are we, right? Or are they gonna put a surety for the road?
We, so we have surety of 100 grand?
Oh, we do.
From last meeting on this development. So, their, their, their next request is to release lots, it's all but lot 10, so there's still one lot that will not be released.
That's less secure than having all the lots, right?
What's the problem with lot 10?
I don't know, if, if there's just not a, a buyer yet, or if it's not completed?
I would guess it hasn't been, yeah, it hasn't been lined up for sale, because I believe all of the septic ASBILs have been done except for that lot, so I don't think they've done any construction there.
And I think the other thing is if, so we're holding surety for the top costs and miscellaneous, probably ASBIL plans and stuff like that, and, I mean, every house is built and it's ready to go, so I think if that lot was ready to go, there would be no reason for them not to finish the whole job.
Right.
You went this far at your own peril, whatever, you know, so...
And I don't know if any of you have seen it, but it does look nice out there. They're doing a nice job with it.
It was, it's kind of an amazing feat to be able to do that without releasing lots. I'm sure there's a little bit of stress going on there right now, too.
Sure.
It's because they're not here. So, all these pictures, anyway, let's deal with one thing. So, I don't have a problem with the modification to the subdivision plan to have the bump out with a stipulation about the easement, and that it'll appear in the ASBIL when we get it. So, if anybody else has a problem with it?
No, I think...
Then I would entertain a motion to approve that, as a minor change, modification.
I move that we approve the, the bump out in the pavement to provide better access to the fire tank as a minor modification of the subdivision plans.
And the retaining wall, is that part of it?
Yeah.
The three-foot retaining wall?
Mm-hmm.
Is that wall being eliminated completely?
No, no, it's, it's just gonna be sloped in with the topography of the land and not just go the same way.
Yeah, this is another thing, I don't think this one really should be a modification, because I think on the plan, it says a three-foot-high maximum wall.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's only three feet high at the peak, and then it tapers off as the topography allows.
It disappears into the...
So, yeah, I'm not sure that this really requires any modification.
I don't think it does.
Okay. I have, I mean, I have it in here, but if you endorse it, then it's fine.
And I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is a request to release lots, Form O for partial release. The applicant is requesting the release of lots 7, 8, 9, 11, 12, and 13. Lot 10 will be remaining. There is $100,000 surety that is being held for the completion of just the road, or for what else?
We had for the completion of the road, and that is also with Derek's fees included in that.
And that's just the top coat?
Yeah.
And all the drainage structures and everything are in?
Everything's in, yeah.
And I saw it calls field that's the test results, which I'd have to have help deciphering. But the question I have is, I don't see a report from, from them saying that the only thing left to do is the top coat.
Yeah, the, the June 19th letter has a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, when we, when they posted the surety. When they posted the surety.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is it doesn't itemize what's left to do and how much it costs, so...
And the, the compaction test all passed, yeah?
Yes, it did. Okay, oh, I see at the very end, ninety-seven thousand eight hundred to be considered. And we have that?
We have, we got a hundred.
In the law?
Yep.
Okay, I think when we talked in that meeting, we were hoping that, you know, they, we were giving them a timeline on getting it topped. We didn't want it to go out for, forever.
Next year, twenty. So, do you know what the status is of Lot 10? Are they actively constructing with heavy equipment, or could they do the roadway now?
That, I'm not sure. I, I can't remember. I think we've done the septic design, I believe, for all of them, but I don't know where they stand on construction with that one.
But the ones we're releasing already have septics installed?
Yes. Yeah, and those ASB builds have been done, submitted to the board health.
Yeah, Ralph completed, um, final inspections on three of them today.
Three of the houses?
Mm.
So Lot 10 is actively being constructed, or empty, or you have...
I'm not sure.
Is Lot 10 one of these places they don't really want to build?
Oh, no, they definitely want to build it.
I, I spoke to the, um, to Anna, I think who's the realtor, or handling the, the project with Ron, and they anticipate Lot 10 to be done by the beginning of September.
Oh, you mean start, started by the beginning of September?
I'm sorry?
Started by the beginning of September?
I think they, they said completed.
So they must be building it. They must be in the process of doing it then.
All right, so...
How, how about the, the lot that they have up on the Form E?
Um, I don't know where those stand either right now. I know we did the septics for those, the septic designs a while ago.
Because we've, we've got, we've gotten some complaints from a neighboring town with runoff going out into the street.
Is it the ones to the left of the road entrance where the old house was?
I think so, yes.
Okay. Because I don't know if they're even, I think those got sold off as lots, and they might be individually constructed. I don't know if the developer for Stacy Lane is in charge of those.
I was kind of told that that one was his, but...
I don't think it is. We, we issued a enforcement for that, for their erosion control, and his name wasn't on it.
So, I, for the Lot 10, I think they have skin in the game, so I think that if it isn't just a vacant lot, or they have actively building, I would be okay with releasing these other lots. So, but I'm just one person.
That, that probably means too that if their plan on being completed by September, um...
They'll be back.
They're gonna want to get that released. September's enough time to top call the road.
Sure.
So that would be a real, if, if you could present that to them, that would be a wonderful thing for the planning board. Wouldn't let this drag out.
And for the new homeowners, it'd be nice to have a come.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I move to release the lots of 7, 8, 9, 11, 12, and 13 from the restrictions of the Form F covenant dated July 8th, 2021, for the definitive subdivision plan, definitive residential subdivision Stacy Lane on Fisher Road, West Portman.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is Brookwood Solar, file number 19-005 SP-S. They're looking for a full release of Form O of the perform, for the performance surety that they provided for landscaping vegetation growth of fifty thousand dollars.
Yes, so we put that in place, um, maybe last fall, and that is completely done. Derek did a final inspection on there and gave us the, the okay that it's completed and it's adequate with the growth. So I'm, I would recommend that the board releases the surety for fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Well, from the photos, Manny, it looks a lot better than when we were...
Yeah, I was just thinking that about the puddles and stuff that were in there, and, yeah. We've had a real good growing season.
Yes, we have, we have. And is this the typical pollinator mix that we normally request?
The native pollinator mix? Um, I can't remember what the decision said in it, but I'm, I'm assuming that's what you've been recommending.
Yeah, we have been recommending that, the question is, did they install that?
I mean, there's vegetation there, whether, how much is weeds and how much is...
Well, I see flowers.
Yeah.
See lots of flowers. So it looks a lot better than it did. So, somebody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would, would that we release the surety. Um, the surety of fifty thousand dollars plus interest in the release of the balance of the construction inspection fund after the pavement, the final invoice to SW Co.
Uh, second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next up is Patiko Zero Gifford Road, close out and release the consultant review balance of four hundred and seventy dollars plus interest?
Yep, so, um, that was for previous filings for Zero Gifford Road. They filed with us quite, quite a bit for that property, and, um, their next step is to go for the definitive subdivision. They did their, their prelim with us a few months ago, so I recommend that close out of those accounts, both of them, and the release of that money.
Even though they're coming before us for the definitive?
Yeah, because when you have a definitive, it's a new application, and you have new submission fees for the, the consultant.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I, I move to release the inspection funds of four hundred and seventy dollars plus interest for Plant 29, Lot 22C.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is Plot 29, Lot 22C, RRL Patiko, close out and release the cult consultant review balance of fifteen hundred dollars plus interest.
Yep, for the same property.
Um, Mr. Chair, I move to release the inspection funds of fifteen hundred dollars plus interest for Plant 29, Lot 22C, RRL.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, pre-application consultation, file number 23-025 PAC, request by Vizo Realty Trust to discuss a new layout for a 10-lot definitive subdivision plan.
Okay.
Before you start, I just wanted to speak to the gentleman that was asking before about, um, the property of High Ridge. Uh, we haven't forgotten, we're getting to that, we're just going through all these things.
Well, I'll do some of this, it's the first time I've been here, so I'm going to ask some very basic questions, but I want to understand it.
Right. So, okay, please.
Okay. Um, so again, Tom Morris with Zenith Consulting Engineers. Um, so, last time I came in about this, um, we talked very generally, and I know you guys wanted more specifics, kind of see what the actual physical impact of the waiver would mean. Um, so we've gone through and done a drainage design, um, without the waiver to show what is required, and then we did an impact analysis to figure out what we would be able to eliminate with the waiver. So we have, um, a combination. We have an infiltration detention basin here, and then detention basin at the bottom. To be able to infiltrate anything here, we have to come up in the road quickly to be able to gain the elevation, have groundwater separation. Um, you can see it here on the profile. We're coming up with a, it's six percent, not super steep, um, within your regulations, but we have to come up quickly to be able to create a low point here, to be able to get into infiltration. Do you see a little bit better here? And then down at the low spot, at the intersection, we can get the water down into a detention basin, which doesn't require the separation of groundwater. So, this alone does not provide the volume control that's required. So what we had to do was find another spot for infiltration. Within reason, this was the only place it could be, back behind the cemetery that's right here. And we can get the cul-de-sac in a stretch, a small stretch of the road with the, the front lawns of a couple of the lots down through these catch basins to that basin, and then we have a portion of overland flow coming out of the woods here that go to that basin. So, with these initial basins too, they have an overflow that comes out to another detention basin to slow it down, because these are undersized for the amount of road that's going to it. So it gets outletted and detained here before it goes into the well and system. With the waiver, we would be able to completely eliminate this basin here, and this basin could become fully detention, which would mean that the elevation, you can see, um, as you're coming up from the abutting lot, we're coming up several feet to the top of the berm. We'd be able to lower this whole thing so it's not as much of an eyesore, and likely shrink it up a little bit, so it's not as close to the house on the new lot. We could even potentially pull this away from the road a little bit. But that's essentially the impact, is eliminating this basin back here, and being able to reconfigure this to better meet natural grade and be a little bit less of an eyesore for the neighbors and the street.
So on the, one of the next sheets, uh, you have a table here that shows, uh, the pre and post water for the different storm levels.
Yep.
And it shows, uh, I guess water going to two different lots and to Charlotte White Road. One of them is going to Lot 58, which is the big rectangular lot on Charlotte White.
Right, yeah, where the junkyard is.
Right.
Yeah, so there's existing flow there, overland, and we have a portion of the backyards here that's gonna continue to go that way. And then it goes through their lot into the basin.
So there's still significant water, even post, there's still significant water going from this property over that property?
Well, yes, I would say it's, there is water going there, it's, we're lessening it from pre-development.
And are we here just to talk about the drainage, or are we talking about...
Yeah, so the, the hope is, even if we, we know that you might not be able to actually grant the waiver now, but if you're in favor of us moving forward and going with the waiver, we can do our definitive design, asking for the waiver. We just, if you don't want the waiver, we don't want to waste the time of going ahead, asking for the waiver, doing full design, and then coming back, having to do another design.
So can you give us a complete description of the waiver that you're seeking?
Uh, a waiver from the 10-year volume control, um, from your subdivision rights. So pre versus post, the volume of the runoff has to be less than pre-development, which is not required from state requirements, it's only the local bylaw or regulation by law.
And the benefit of us granting the waiver is that you can reduce the size of the catch basins or eliminate one and reduce the size of the other?
Yeah, we can eliminate one, which, um, I mean, it has some buffer zone impact, so, I mean, that's beneficial to the wetlands over here. Um, and then visually is the biggest thing up front. We'd be able to lessen the mound that's here, um, and probably shrink it up a bit too, the footprint of it.
Well, what say you?
What do I say about that? I'm, I have no comments on that since it's drainage.
Um, all these lots, because this was, the, the original subdivision had a, had a community septic on it. You've perked all the lots already?
Uh, we have not.
So all lots haven't been perked?
Right. So yeah, that would be the next step if we, before moving forward with the definitive design, we'd have to go out and do perks.
Because I'm pretty sure that's probably some pretty tough soil over there. It might have been one of the reasons they, they were, went for the community septic, because they were having trouble getting perks. And I know that the new purchaser's looking, he doesn't want to build the community septic, so he's looking at that, so he might be spending a lot of money and he's not able to get perks over there.
Potentially, but yeah, that's one thing we'll have to try for.
So if it's the economics of doing the community septic versus individual septics, I think that might be a false, um, way to look at it, because I, I would think that the community septic could be substantially cheaper than all these individual ones.
Um, well, I believe they had a quote for putting it in, and I, I want to say it was somewhere around two million dollars, which I know is gonna be well above all the individuals.
How many bedrooms were on the original one? There's thirteen lots?
I think it was a, I thought it was just eleven. I thought it was only one more than we're proposing now.
I thought it was twelve.
Okay.
Twelve, thirteen.
So...
Times three bedrooms.
Thirty-six to forty-eight, somewhere in there.
So...
It's three or four bedrooms apiece, probably.
I think they were all three bedrooms, but, so thirty-nine. Let's say it's thirteen lots with thirty-nine, with thirty-nine bedrooms.
Mm-hmm.
Times a hundred and ten. What's that? It's probably like...
It's around four thousand, just over four thousand.
I can't believe that the septic system would be two million dollars.
Mm-hmm. I think part of that was...
How much was...
The slope that's on the site.
It was probably less. Say again?
I think part of the cost was the slope that's on the site. It's sometimes difficult, um, to get such a large system into a slope like that. A lot more groundwork required than that.
That was designed in the plan, right?
Mm-hmm. And that, that approval process took a long time. And it took a lot of pushing to, to get there. And the question in my mind, is it, is it, is it the false assumption that people want sixty thousand square foot lots? Or is it you don't want to do a combined septic? Or is it, what is it? That's what we, we'd like to know from, because the, the whole region is trying to figure out why open space residential development is having such a tough time getting, getting going around here. And in some places where they do it, the value of the property is greater than single-family houses on sixty thousand square foot lots per unit. And it saves land, it saves money for infrastructure, it saves all this other stuff. So we're just trying to get our heads around... So we're just trying to get our heads around why. People are, developers are so reluctant to do it.
From what I understand on this one is the cost of that septic.
Well, the other thing is, is he's gotta put it in first. Before he, before one person. That's, that's what.
I know that, so I mean, it's, 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 you, you have to get either a system that's scalable. Which is tough. Or you have to have the money to put the septic system in first and think that you're gonna sell lots or houses.
Which you kinda did the same thing on Stacy Lane, you put them all in and he hasn't released them, so I think he can pull the rabbit out of the hat. I'm just, I, I know the soil conditions out there and, and they're rough. So I, I just think he, he might be, he might be spending a lot of. Resources and, and he's not able to get those perks, but that's just, I'd wanna know that first.
Yeah, so we, we will do the perks before submitting our definitive, for sure. Cause we can't say a house is going here if a septic can't fit in.
Okay, so let's get back to your question, would we be willing to consider a waiver for the drainage?
I, you know, I, I think it's not. A good matter of public policy to waive. The, the regulations. Because they have to do less site work. I mean, that's, there's no public interest in having you do less site work. You know, and whether or not you can use your design skills to. You know. Make the, the entrance work. When I, when this subdivision was approved before. I walked all over it. You know, all of these side hill wetlands, the groundwater is just. It's breaking out of the surface of the ground, its soils are very tough and very wet. So I, I for one think we should. Grant, you know, sort of blanket waivers because it's difficult to do. The site is what the site is. You know, the applicant has to take the risk of trying to make it work with the site he's buying. And then I, I think my colleague is, is really giving you sound advice, you know, I'd go back to the client and tell him. You know, at least check out every other lot and dig some holes and see. What you're getting for perks. Before we, we start to run through this whole process and you find out that it's, it's not gonna work or it's gonna be many fewer homes. So I, I think. You know, that's probably the next step and I don't think. I for one am not just. Willing to, to waive a standing requirement we have.
Sure, I will add that we, for Stacy Lane. We designed, we did our initial design retaining the ten-year volume. Per your regulation. And there were multiple comments from the board on how big and ugly these basins were going to be. And that's what made us believe that this was a possibility, that you would be in favor of. Us moving forward, asking for the waiver, I understand you might not legally be able to grant it now in the preliminary process.
Well, we, we don't have an application before, so.
Right.
We, we can't. Mr. Leach?
Sean Leach, it has nothing to do with the merits of the subdivision or the drainage or anything along that line, but more of a. A concern, because I, I served on another board in town. There's always the concern of incompatible uses next to each other, next to this particular subdivision is a junkyard. We had, if you, if you may recall, Jordan's Way on one seventy-seven or Kayla's Way on Charlotte White Road, which is across the street from this and. Legally. Conforming businesses basically or, you know, existing non-conforming businesses that now turn into problems because of the residents. Right next door to it and now they don't wanna hear the junkyard or whatever the case may be. So I don't know if there's any kind of provision you can do to alert. Or put in the fact that there is. A junkyard next door and that. You know, because one of the things that border health will have to deal with is that complaint. You know, where you have an incompatible use one right next to another and nobody wants a junkyard in the backyard. So that the minute they move in, it's all sudden now it's gonna get rid of the junkyard.
Yeah, I, I completely agree, I'm not sure that we have the legal authority. To say you, you can't do it because of the junkyard.
Right, no, I don't expect it not to do, but I think it should be something, you can make a notification or some kind of.
Well, I thi, I think that we can, obviously, they've seen the junkyard.
Right.
They bought the property. And they're gonna be taking a risk in developing something that's right next to a junkyard and trying to sell it.
Yeah, it's a, there's definitely less marketability there.
So.
The junkyard just. Had two storm, has a stormwater plan that just got approved and they're getting, moving forward to build their plan too across the street. And they had some enforcement with the border health. Last fall, so.
You talking about this one or the one on the other side?
This one.
Well. You two, are the, are what they're looking for is a variance?
I, I don't, I don't think, like, like my colleague said and, and I would kinda, I mean, Bob's pretty much an expert in drainage, so. We got Sean Leach here and. I, I knew a little bit about it too and, and I feel the same way, I mean, the drainage, you know, we, we, we have a lot of problems with. Stormwater regulations for individual homeowners. You know, and then now the houses start getting built and we'll get problems with, you know, I mean, that retention pond in front of that wetland is. You know, we can, our wetlands are real resilient, that retention pond will be beautiful and it'll be a perfect filter for that wetland and. I think we probably need it there in that location.
We, we already have problems with stormwater coming down Charlotte White Road. Across Main Road. When it really, probably today, probably there was tons of water coming out, my driveway's toast today. So I'm sure there was a lot of water, a lot of debris crossing Main Road from Charlotte White Road today. I don't think that we can afford to. To waive anything with stormwater right in that area because it, it just impacts all the existing homeowners. And the town's property with the roads.
And, and you know, and I, and I know you did pick up to try to get the separation from the groundwater and so forth and the other basin, but I think you're gonna find when you start doing your perks that. You, you're gonna get very, very little infiltration. In there.
Oh yeah, I believe we. We only use one point oh two inches per hour, which is low. And there were previous perks done in a handful of locations. And there were some pretty close to where this infiltration basin is going. And actually right, almost right in the lower basin as well, so we have an idea, we had perk rates from that too. So we have an idea what the soil was like. And we think what we've done in this preliminary design is, it meets that. So to speak about the, the water going across Main Road. I believe where it goes across, there's a culvert in the wetland that crosses underneath. That would not be more inundated by allowing more volume and I know that sounds counterintuitive. But it's really the rate that a culvert can pass. So if you granted the volume waiver, we'd still be held to lowering the rate from pre to post-development. And if you lessen the rate, you can't increase flooding. Unless you're in a closed, a small closed system. If I was discharging everything to one existing low spot behind these houses and there was no outlet anywhere. Then we could impact the flooding. And come over into these houses. But going into a wetland which discharges across the street into a bigger wetland. The, the concern is the rate going through that culvert. And if you're lessening the rate, you can't flood it out. Cause the water's going slower and it's being put through.
I, I think the board understands those issues and, and, and while the. Since I, I voted for the Stacy Lane. Let me explain the, my inconsistency, so. You know, Stacy Lane is a long curve down, downward and surrounded in a low spot. There was no possibility of having the stormwater run back up and, and into the public ways. You know, all of that stuff weighs here. You're up on a high spot draining down to an area where we already have. Flooding problems in public ways that is, this site in both directions drains. Eventually into public ways. So for us. Checking the volume. Not only knocking off the peaks, but, but trying to do everything we can in this location is, is, I think what the purpose of the regulations were. So that's, that, that's how I see the difference. But, but really I would strongly suggest that before you move forward with the design to. Get the client to agree to go out with a, I mean, this, there, there were road, there was enough. There've been enough holes dug in there, you could drive up in there with a machine and get, dig some holes and figure out what's, what's going on.
And, and I would think he's gonna, they're gonna need to file for an nepoties permit. For disturbance on that side, so I, I mean, if. We could give you, we could grant you a waiver and then when it gets in front of the feds, they say no. Like you, you, you make you redesign it too.
They wouldn't have jurisdiction over your local bylaw, your local regulation. Cause we'd still be meeting all state regulations.
So if we approved something that was incorrect and the state picked it up. They wouldn't have jurisdiction to make you change it.
How could it be incorrect?
We're giving you, we're giving you a waiver to, to a state regulation.
It's not a state regulation.
Federal.
Local. It's only your local, controlling, controlling the ten-year volume is only your local requirement.
The nepoties permit's pretty, you know, you gotta follow that, that's, that's, I'm, I'm not worried about any of our regulations if you pull a nepoties permit.
Right, and, and that is. Mostly to do with erosion control during construction, the niptees permit. Which. Shouldn't be impacted by how the drainage is designed. It's just making sure you have proper erosion controls. That's really the, the need of the niptees permit.
And your discharges and just.
But making sure those are properly controlled as far as erosion, that's what they look at. They're not looking at your drainage design, they're looking at your points of discharge. Whether it's overland or from your basin. And whether or not it's properly protected so that no erosion goes offsite or into a wetland.
Could I just, apart from the drainage and I defer to our experts here on, on this issue of the waiver, but. Apart from that, if you do, the other thing that I. Saw in this plan, looking at overall is. If you do come back with a definitive site plan. So I just, would just have, ask your client to think about some of these lots and the marketability of them. The fact that lot two. Put that up, has got an enormous amount of. It's got twelve acres, but it's, it'll have a drainage easement, it'll have a lot of wetlands. It's an odd shaped lot, there's this lot that comes in from Main Road that juts into it, I mean. And then lot three below that has the same issue of, of a lot of wetlands in the back. It's compromised by having what I assume is the, is the cemetery easement, right, that that can't be.
I believe, I believe they actually made this a parcel, I drew it as an easement, but those should be property lines.
So that would not be part of the lot, that, it would be sectioned off or lotted out?
Yeah, I'd have to, I have to ask our surveyor about that and that would definitely be ironed out before definitive.
But I mean, you could see what, what do you have left with lot three when you cut out the outline of the cemetery?
Right.
And you need to provide access to it, I assume, but those lots, those first couple of lots, one, two, three, maybe just.
What does that cemetery look like out there now?
I haven't seen it in person, but from looking at the survey, there's a stone wall around three sides of it. And then the cemetery within, I believe it's an old, old cemetery, so probably.
Well, you know, there's, there's, there's a real history with that cemetery too.
Right.
Yeah, is this the cemetery, yeah? Right, so you have that and I mean, I don't know if they would, if there's any benefit to just putting. Donating all this backland with the wetlands to the town rather than giving ownership to slices of it. In a most peculiar configuration. I mean, I wouldn't wanna, I don't know what the value of lot two is, cause you're, or some of these lots, because you've got, there's so many restrictions. And. You've just kind, the, the whole. The number of places where you can site a house are very minimal, so.
Right. Yeah, and that was, that was one thing that was brought up with Stacy Lane as well, there was a couple of lots down at the end of the cul-de-sac. Where there was wetlands on the backside and the drainage basin down there. And they understood that there was limitations on the lot and they just had to make sure that the house was in. Basically the one spot that it could go and the septic was right there. They make it work and they know it's maybe not quite as marketable, that's really the biggest thing that you could potentially lose. Is if someone doesn't have full access or they can't build a shed or barn up back, then. They might not value it as much. But that's a risk that the developer has to take.
The other thing I was thinking about is the proposed road. Stays away from the junkyard until it gets, it gets closer and closer. Infinitely closer than touches the, the corner of the junkyard. And it's really because you're trying to do lot one and two. Which I think you'd have a hard time marketing anyway, I just don't understand. If you're gonna do large lots, I'm not sure that you need to do this many. And how they're gonna be, are you gonna sell them, I don't know, I mean. I would think you'd want the road as far away from the junkyard as you could. So that you'd have some kind of buffer.
Yeah, but I would say. With the houses, it's definitely, it's certainly better to, than the inverse where the houses would be backed right up to the junkyard.
Don't put houses there, I mean, that's. Anyway, we can, you designed it for you.
I think, I think those, most of those conditions are why they went with the, with the, with the subdivision they had prior. And the previous developer, that's probably why you went in that direction, cause that was the best way to go.
The reason the subdivision isn't built there is that once they had your approval, they thought about, oh my god, I have to build this and they never thought it worked.
What was, who's really the septic cost is what prohibited them from wanting to do it.
Perhaps. So in, in any case. You know. We, we spent some time, we've given you our advice, you understand what we're. I think our opinion is.
Sure.
Why don't you see what your next step should be?
Okay, yeah, yeah, definitely next step would be doing the perks and then we'll move ahead with the definitive with no waiver, it'll be essentially what you see here. And if you have no issues with that layout, we can move ahead with that, cause we have a design for it, we've made sure it does work.
Yep.
So we can go ahead with that.
You'll, you'll come in with a preliminary and we can, once it's an application, we can deal with that.
And, and as, as we had mentioned about an erosion control plan, file your nepoties or, I mean, obviously nepoties until you get approval, but. You know, when you do our design, give us an erosion control plan, like we said, our streets are, those Charlotte White and Main Road are being. Our streets are, those Charlotte White and Main Road are being inundated with storm water coming out of there. So it's gonna be an issue in trying to build it. I mean, he, Stacy Lane didn't have any issues, because as they said, it ran down to the back. The neighbor in town called us about the one up at the top and wanted to, you know, that's why we had an enforcement on it. So, I guess, and, and all the neighbors, the, the business across the street, they, they call every day on them. So it's gonna be the same type of, same type of thing. It's gonna be a tough one.
Most of them are now. There's no, no easy ones.
All right, you got what you wanted? Not what you wanted?
Not what I wanted, but I understand it.
You got the information that you needed, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, Short Term Rental Bylaw Working Committee?
Yep, so at the last, at the last meeting, there wasn't a formal vote taken to appoint two members from the planning board. So if I could just have a motion to appoint two members of the planning board to that committee.
So who were those two members?
I think it was Bob and Mark, yeah.
Okay. Okay, wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Bob and Mark to the Short Term Building Committee?
Second.
Rental.
Short Term Rental.
Short Term Rental?
Yep. All those in favor?
Hi. One other point on that is that they asked, this is the members, we had an informal meeting, and they asked that a member of the planning board staff, either you or Michael, also join these meetings.
Mm-hmm, we intend to.
For your expertise and someone to record some minutes as well.
Mm, we, we intend to.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to the public hearing on High Ridge Road. But before that, we're doing... Where are we?
I think it's the...
That's a mixed matter.
Yes.
Yeah, it's the A and R and the flexible frontage together for High Ridge.
Right, so, A and R. As we said before, we had before, so approval not required, A and R plot plat 42, lots 1T, 7 and 8-2. File number 23-023A, request by applicant for endorsement of a two-lot plan of land located at 82 High Ridge Road, Assessor's Map 42, Lot 7, 8-2 and 1T.
Correct, I believe. Good evening, Sean Leach, Northeast Engineers, representing Eric and Jillian Reposo, who are here tonight. They're the owners of 82 High Ridge Road, the last house on the left. We were in here, in here, well, we were in front of the planning board about a year ago with an extension on High Ridge Road, and it was suggested that we do not do an extension on High Ridge Road. We show, I think, four lots at the time that could be created by the extension of High Ridge Road. We're showing that tonight as part of the requirements for the flexible frontage. In the year that's passed, the reason it's taken so long is there were several survey issues and title issues that had to be cleared up to get to this point where Mr. and Mrs. Reposo had bought a parcel of land at the end of High Ridge Road, and there was another parcel that had overlapping title and they had to clear that up, and they've done that. So now they've come back to you in front of you with two lots with 50 feet of frontage, meeting the area and upland requirements. The floodwaters have been flagged by NRS with soil borings and everything. They have not been accepted by the Conservation Commission, but it's pretty good with NRS doing it. It's a pretty good chance there'd be very slight deviations, and they will be accepted. So what we're asking for tonight is to approve two lots with the frontages on 50 feet. Well, they have a little bit more than 50 feet on High Ridge Road, including the existing house, to create two additional lots at the end of High Ridge Road.
Okay, so, explain to me again how this is gonna work. So, the existing house on the left-hand side of the cul-de-sac?
Has slightly less than 150 feet of frontage. I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but it's a little more than 100. It has enough area, which is all upland, which meets the requirement for a flexible frontage for that lot.
It's 132.
132 feet of frontage. So it needs slightly more than 60...
Excuse me, can I add a bit? By looking at, I'm across from Reposo.
Okay.
Okay, I've been there 30, almost 35 years. I'm trying to understand this, and when I look at the maps that were given to me, the frontage on, the way it is right here on Lot One, says the frontage is 54 feet length. Lot Two is 50. Reposo has been reduced from 209, if I believe, which is half the cul-de-sac, to 104. So I don't understand why you get 137 as his frontage.
132.
132, I believe you're, there's 104 on the cul-de-sac and then there's a little fillet going on the return to a...
Well, I don't see that right here, sir.
Okay. So, so you have...
Excuse me, so there shouldn't be any direct communication between you. If you have a question, ask us and we'll ask him. Just the way that we do it, so...
Yeah, I'm new to this, so I'm gonna mess things up for you guys real bad, because I'm going, I'm going to interject where I'm...
That's okay. So we understand that you haven't done this before.
No.
But the way that it works is that there's no communication between somebody in the audience and somebody that's presenting.
Oh, I can't see, I can't do a rebuttal or something?
No.
Yes, you can do a rebuttal through us.
Oh, oh...
Because this is a public hearing and we're televised...
Well, I am referring to you, because you made a statement which I...
So just, just listen for a moment, we're trying to help you.
Okay.
So, the, because this is being televised.
I know.
And, and we, we're on mics and all of that, so the, the public has a public interest in, in our actions.
I understand that.
So, the best way that the public can understand all that is that when you speak on, at the mic, it's being, it's being, it's being recorded, and when you walk around in the room, the, the people who are viewing this can't hear what you're saying. And, and we, and we have to protect the public's interest. So the, the way that this best happens, I'll, we'll try to answer every question you have. But if, if you let, if you let him present and then you, and you have questions about that, you ask the questions and we'll get you answers. And, and...
So when do I ask the questions?
After he's done.
Oh, okay, just wanna know that, okay.
I, I think I'm completed. I think basically what you're seeing in front of you is a flexible frontage division of land with, meets the requirements by showing a yield plan and with all the area and upland requirements for the three lots, that including one existing house lot and two additional new lots.
So I see the two additional new lots have a lot of area.
Correct.
But the house lot does not. So how does that, how does that, explain to us how that fits into our regulations?
Okay, under your bylaw, you're allowed to reduce the, the area or, excuse me, you're allowed to reduce the frontage, and by increasing the area, by the percentage, you're recre, you're decreasing the frontage. So the requirement of 150 feet is being reduced to about 132 feet. So there's a slight increase in the area of the lot, which is the existing house lot, which basically 60,000 would be a requirement under the 150-foot rule. Under 132, it's slightly more, and I believe it's much more than it needs to be, the way it's shown. Eighty-two thousand? I don't have it in front of me, so I apologize.
Seventy-eight, nine.
Yep.
Seventy-eight.
So it's, you're adding 18,000 by taking away 18 feet of frontage, more or less.
But Lot Four, that lot, before you fiddled with it...
Had 209 feet of frontage.
But how much area?
Oh, I don't know that off the top of my head. There isn't.
So it had more area, because your cake is...
Yeah, it had, yeah, yeah, it had more area. That lot does meet the requirement under the flexible frontage with the additional area it has.
But it seems counterintuitive that it fits our regulation by reducing the area.
But it meets the zoning requirement of the area. It meets the area that it would be required if you were creating a new lot with 132 feet of frontage. It more than meets the area requirement.
Right, but it's not a new lot.
I understand that, but the requirement is 60,000, the requirement is 60,000 square feet, and it has much more than 60,000 square feet. And under the flexible frontage, you would need slightly more than 60,000 square feet, and we're given it 78,000 square feet.
Okay, so this, this plan that has this teardrop or pear-shaped cul-de-sac is not what you're proposing?
No, 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 which, and that's not what...
That's the proof, Lee.
Okay, yes.
Just so we understand, okay.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so first we're gonna ask these folks if they have any more questions for him, and then we're gonna get to you. So, anybody have any questions?
Yeah, just on this, the, the yield plan, that was the other term I was looking for. That yield plan with this, you're presupposing if you could create that teardrop, that would give you enough frontage to have four lots.
Yeah, it, it does two things. The reason we have the tier-shaped lot is last year, you were not amenable to what I would call extending an already non-conforming road.
Yeah.
Having the tier-shaped lot does not extend a dead-end road. In fact, the dead-end road is still the same length and the teardrop keeps it a non-extended dead-end road, I would say. So the tier-shaped lot, which could be, it meets all the geometry requirements of zoning and development, provides enough frontage for the four lots.
So, so the, the plan that we're, would be approving is the one that says Flex One?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, sir. Could you identify yourself, please?
Okay, my name is Raymond Rodricks. I live at 73 High Ridge Road, been there for about 35 years. What I have is, in front of me is, so I can understand what's going on in these procedures.
Yep.
And it says approval not required. What does that mean?
So, it's an anomaly in Massachusetts only. It's a division of land that is not a subdivision. If you have, on a road in existence, if you have 150 feet of frontage and 60,000 square feet of area, you can, you can make a lot like that on a road, and it's not a subdivision. So we can't condition it, we can't do anything else but endorse it and say it is not a subdivision. It becomes a lot. So what they're doing is on the one with the existing house, is that the A and R?
I believe because, it's an A and R, because under your provisions, under your development and zoning bylaws, we're allowed to reduce frontage. So the answer is yes, that the existing lot...
Is the A and R.
Is part of the A and R.
Part of the A and R.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it's part of the regulatory authority that we have as planning board in the state of Massachusetts to endorse plans for approval not required or A and R, which means that it is really not a technical subdivision, but it is a division of land that property owners have the right to do if they have 150 feet of frontage and 60,000 square feet of, of area.
May I correct you on that?
Yep.
But there, when you say 150,000, 60,000, in other words, we have enough frontage and area that meet the zoning requirements under the provisions of the bylaw.
Correct.
So, okay, so next question would be, there's a footnote next to this, number two. Is that related to what we're talking about?
I don't know what you're looking at, so...
This footnote.
Oh, it's on the agenda. I think it's on the agenda.
On the agenda?
Yeah.
Is it, is it my handwriting?
Yeah.
Oh, that's just my personal notes for myself.
We don't have that on our...
That was my scrabbles.
All right, so I'm confused here. He's talking about four lots, and the reason he's, he's doing that is that my neighbor, Gus Kamara, which is abiding Lot One and, okay. Yep, they wanted to build, or he wanted, Mr. Reposo wanted to take 25 feet of his property, because there's an easement on the maps that says the easement is 20, is 50 feet. Mr. Kamara owns 25, Reposo owns 25. So he wanted Kamara to, Gus Kamara, to give him the 25 feet to build the road for the cul-de-sac in order to access four pieces of property. Now, I'm a little bit confused that you mentioned four pieces of property again, where this map that I'm holding is just a Lot One and Two, which is with Mr. Reposo is three pieces of property.
Right.
Right, so that's what we're discussing, is just those three pieces of property?
So the, the reason that he's talking about four lots is he has to prove that he could get four lots into this area.
See, that's what I'm confused about.
Right.
Is like...
We're not approving four lots.
Oh, yeah, but once it's, once this is approved, then can you approve more lots? Is that what you're saying?
No.
No, okay, so I don't understand, that's what I'm saying. I'm new to this stuff.
So we, we have another section of our bylaw that says the, the requirements are 150 feet and 60,000 square feet.
Yeah, I understand.
But we have a flexible frontage part of the bylaw.
I read the, I read the, I read the bylaws here.
Right. So the flexible frontage says that you can reduce the frontage if you increase the area.
So that's why I'm here, is when I look at this, the frontage on Lot One is 54 feet. That's the way it says it. Lot Two is 50. Mr. Reposo has now been reduced to 104. I'm trying to understand, did Mr. Reposo stipulate what he wants the land for?
I have no idea.
I mean, I don't know if there's a requirement for stipulation.
Well, I'm, I'm getting at something.
Okay.
I'm hearing that he wants to have family members build house lots on Lot One and Two. And I'm saying, well, if I look at this, then you need a common access, right? That we talked about. So that common access, it has to be probably a certain width. So I'm looking at this and saying, well, if it's 54 and 50 and you have a common access, how do you do all that? I'm just, I'm not trying to be adverse here, but I'm trying to understand something in case there's a mistake.
They could put the common access on either lot or spread out the boundary between the two.
That's what I figured they would do.
Yep, that's what I would think they would do.
And that's, that's, that's okay?
That's okay.
Yeah, no mistakes?
Because they're, they're gonna come for a common driveway application too.
Correct, if that's what you require, yeah, correct. We didn't want to do both at the same time, because if you don't get one, you can do the other, obviously.
So, so they can come for a common driveway approval to use one access for the two lots.
Okay, I just wanna understand that there's no mistakes, because it's very confusing, to say the least, in the beginning, but I'm getting better at it because I'm understanding this. But I, this flexible frontage, that's very interesting. And then there's a lot of wetlands, and I understand that if you get more land, then your frontage can be decreased because you have, I understand that, which is interesting. Because my question was, Lot Two has a weird shape, and I guess in order to fall into that narrow frontage, you had to buy all that wetland, right? Am I right, sir?
I think he owned it already.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, he already owned it.
He already owned it.
He already owned it, he didn't buy the wetland for any purpose. I mean, this was part of the property that he owned.
Really? Yes.
Okay, all right, so...
So he's, he's just dividing a piece that he owned.
Oh.
Into two. So I didn't know that. And, and the reason, the reason he's doing it this way is because he had all this land, I don't know how many acres. It's like 14 acres.
14 acres plus or less.
And he wanted to have at least two lots instead of one, but he didn't have enough frontage. So the only way to do it would be to have the flexible frontage approval. So the only way to do it would be to have the flexible frontage approval that way. So it, it kind of makes sense. So, you know, lot two is eight and a half acres and lot one is five and three quarters acres.
Yeah.
And, uh, those are pretty big lots.
Yeah, I understand. That's what I'm saying.
So because they're so big, you can reduce the frontage quite a bit and make this work without, without adding another cul-de-sac or another road or anything.
I understand. So my question is, why do I get this notice? And we talked, because it's three, it's, what is it, 300 frontage?
300 feet.
Why am I getting this notice then? It almost seems like, uh, am I supposed to voice my opinion? And what good is that going to do?
Well, it's, it's just so that you're informed about what's happening.
Oh, that's the only reason?
And you're welcome to come and like you're going now and talking and asking.
And I, I realize what's going on here, but I don't want to cause problems. But I've been there 35 years and what I see is more traffic, more people, maybe more construction for a while. And the beauty of it is not going to be there. How much of it is going to go, I don't know. So am I being adverse and thus, well, yes and no? Because I've been there a long time and the beauty of it, I like it the way it is. Now, I understand what he's trying to do. That's fine. I'm not against it. But what I don't particularly like is, this all happened within about 10 days of my life. So I had to go and find a lot of stuff in a very short period of time and understand it, which I didn't particularly, I didn't appreciate that. I don't need this. But I understand it. So I want to understand because, to be honest with you, just to matter if he wants to, because I was an appraiser. By the way, Mr. Smith, are you the previous owner of a place in Randolph that did the Hummel, made the Hummel products? That's where I recognized you. That's 30 years ago.
Oh, wait a minute.
That goes back a generation.
That's a long time ago. My father.
Yeah. He owned the business at $80,000, $80 million. He had the Hummel product. I mean, he had the best thing in the world going and he sold it back. And I was there at the time you did it. I got, I got unemployed because of you. I was the senior P A. Next to John, John the manager in computers.
So did you work for my family's company?
Of course I did. I worked there for about a year until you sold the company. And then, then everybody was unemployed.
The company went into bankruptcy.
I know that.
We didn't sell it.
Oh, I bet I didn't know.
We didn't, I mean, there wasn't anything to sell.
Oh.
I wouldn't be sitting here.
I thought you did this deliberately.
But I didn't have any part to it.
Oh.
But you're, I don't know. We'll have a chat sometime offline.
So, yeah, that's, I'll put that into the record. Don't know if it's going to be any good. If he wants to do it family, I understand that, but it's like, yeah. But anyway, Gus has a problem with which Camaro, Carrie gave him the impression, and since I was an appraiser a long ago, I believe everybody understands what adverse possession means. He's got a problem. And I talked to him, he showed me and I told him what it was. So I don't know what he's going to do about it. But if you know anything about adverse possession, there isn't anything you can do about it. If he's, if he, it has developed the land for 32 years, you can just, that's the end of that question. So anyway, that's, all this came about and I tried to understand it as best as I could because I'm like, what is all this about? This dropped on me 10 days ago, so now I understand quite a bit about what's going on. That's, uh,
Okay. I'm good about that now. So any more questions from the audience? Okay. So then, Amy, what's your recommendation?
I recommend that the board endorses the A and R and also votes to approve the flexible frontage special permit. The only two things that, I mean, with blanket conditions for the, for the flexible frontage and the normal findings that we have, that it's in line with our bylaw. But I just would like you to, to make sure that the
Absolutely.
the most narrow part on this is more than, is at least 50 feet.
I'll label the 50 foot width on it to make sure it meets the requirement.
Okay. And are you getting the wet, the wetland line approved?
Yes.
Okay. So I think that the approved wetland line would be beneficial to be on the plan.
So my only comment is going to be a repeat of what I said at the last discussion about big lots with wetlands in the back. Lots one and two that you're creating have primarily wetlands in the back. And I imagine it's just very beautiful, natural habitat. And it adjoins, in the case of lot one, it adjoins this rectangular piece of property that, that goes out to old Pine Hill Road. That is, it says is owned by the Westport Land Conservation Trust. Is that correct?
Correct.
So why not, you know, again, why not de, connect that, give that to the land trust? The, all this land in the back leaving enough so that you meet the requirements of, for area?
We could do that and it was brought up. We can't do that as part of the development because the land trust cannot be part of a development plan. In other words, they can't look like they're benefiting the applicant by saying, we're going to help them out here by taking
So if we approve this now, you can, they can later on.
They could, yes.
They could.
Yes.
You strongly suggest that they could. There's no requirement that they not be part of a plan.
Correct.
Just that they opt not to be part of a plan.
Correct.
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 Which is okay. I mean, so, but we don't have any requirement that they can't.
No, no, yeah.
I, I agree with Mark. I think it'd be great to combine all these things into one ownership. It's preserved. I don't know if taking wetlands away from a, a large lot decreases the value for the assessors?
I don't think so. I think it's considered a building, a building lot.
A building lot.
Yeah, there's eight acres, 800 acres or 80 square feet. It's a building lot.
Yeah, the value is all in the building lot.
That's correct. The, the problem you have here is our uplands just meet the requirement for the uplands for the flexible frontage. So we need to keep enough area to do that, to make it flexible frontage. So unless you're willing to waive that, I don't know if you have the power to do that.
I, I think if you come back and try to divide those off, we could consider that. Okay. So I'd entertain a motion first on the A and R.
I, I move to close the special permit hearing and the flexible frontage application. Or on the A and R, I move to approve the A and R because it is compliant with Mass General Laws, Chapter 41, 81b.
And second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the special permit hearing and flexible frontage application of Eric J. and Jillian Reposo for flexible frontage special permit under the Westport zoning bylaw section 8.6 for the property at 82 High Ridge Road, assessors map 42, lots seven, eight dash two, and I, and one T.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then a motion to approve?
And I move to approve the flexible frontage special permit application of Eric J. and Jillian Reposo for the 82 High Ridge Road, Westport, Mass. Property located at 82 High Ridge Road, assessors map 42, lots seven, eight dash two, and one T under Westport zoning bylaw section 8.6, reduced density special permit subject to the findings and conditions.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next. The planners, assessment planners.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
My report mostly consisted of all the admin items in the public hearing, but I do have some info. For the harbor water study, I have not received a report yet from Frank, but I did get his automatic email that he is in and out of the office and working partly remote. And I don't know if he's on vacation or not, but I will, I reached out to him yesterday. I'll try to reach out again and
I have a, a question.
Yeah.
Have they done the seismic work, the non-invasive work yet?
I don't, I don't know. The last thing I knew was that they, they put the sensors in
Yep. But is that complete?
The well testing?
The water testing.
Yeah.
Out of the existing wells that the Harbor group had already done on the right-hand side of River Road, sort of across the street from Spindel Rock, between the road and the pond, they did, um, all the tests that they need to do to ascertain how much water is available. And they believe that they can get 30 to 35 gallons out of a, a well field there, a shallow well field, which would be enough. So now that we're just waiting for the report for Frank to codify that and tell us what the next steps are, I think the next step would be to drill three wells.
Yep.
And so this would be an interim solution because it's not going to help climate sea level rise for the future. But it would, it would solve the problem that they have currently, which is P V A S in their drinking water and also saltwater intrusion into the, or brackish water into the wells. And the fact that their well is cast iron casing that goes down 25 feet, it's 120 years old and they don't ever know when it's going to just collapse, so.
So I'm waiting, I'm waiting on Frank for that and then we can figure out a meeting date to coordinate with the stakeholders and town staff. I do have an update from Serpide on the repurposing of the old high school. So they had scoped out a solid, basic, but functional deliverable of a 3D virtual walkthrough and a large format principal floor plan. So they said it would require about four days on site for a team of three and about a week or so after that to process. And that would be about $13,500. And then for a more traditional and a full A S H E response toolkit, I do not know what that stands for, but it adds public safety data in the event that there's an incident with more detailed page-by-page breakouts of various parts of the buildings and an aerial drone imagery. And that would cost closer to $17,500. And I did ask what software they use. And they said that they use software and hardware technology that projects, for projects like this, is called Matterport. And it's used to capture the buildings and generate the floor plans. And then depending on the complexity and most of the tweaking, it's done in CAD and Adobe. And then
Would you repeat the name of the software? Matterport?
Matterport.
Matterport?
Yep. M A T T E R P O R T. One word.
Have you ever heard of it, Bob?
I don't know.
I guess Serpide had a productive meeting with the superintendent, Mr. Aubin, at the end of March. And they expressed interest in pursuing the more in-depth A S H E toolkit with the data report for public safety. And so
Is this the first responders, not the, the active shooter stuff? That's what that stands for? A S what?
H E.
A S H E? Active shooter or something like that.
Oh.
So it's, it's, uh,
I think that's the American Society of Something Engineering, I believe. I don't think it's active shooters.
Well, it's
Well, that's what, that's what we asked them to get in touch with the superintendent about.
Yeah.
Because that's what the superintendent expressed interest in, in getting information on.
Oh.
It would make sense for
I might have completely wrong. I didn't know what that was.
Yeah, it would make sense for a page-by-page of the breakouts of the various parts of the building in that sense. So that could be it. Anyway, they, they discussed it with Mr. Aubin and Serpide plans to reach out back to him at the end of the year, discuss, to discuss further and looking to work together for that. But Kevin from Serpide, Kevin Hamm, is more than happy to coordinate something or have a meeting and get people involved.
So just as a backup, Serpide, in one of the commission meetings, talked about they had gotten into a contract, I think with Attleboro or North Attleboro? North Attleboro? Or one of the, one of the towns up there, they kind of mushed together in my mind. But to do an active shooter thing with part of their homeland security money that they, they get. And they, this Kevin Hamm has been working with it. And they've worked with the school people and the fire and the police and, you know, give the, the ability to walk through on a computer thing, the whole thing. So there's, there's two different things. One is to repurpose the high school.
Yeah.
Get information about that. The other is active shooter to get video drones of the hallways and the rooms and everything. I think
What is concerned about active shooters at the old high school?
No, at the, at the new high school, at the new school. That, that's why he's meeting with the superintendent. Same guy. So I don't know if he's talking about two different
He must be. He must be.
So we, we have a meeting tomorrow, right? For the building committee?
I think that's right, yeah.
So we get this stuff to them, Amy?
Yeah, I can send you that email from Kevin.
Who's the chairman on that?
They're going to elect the chairman. Sort of an organizational meeting.
I mean, I guess send it to Jimmy so that we can get it. I'm kind of, it's going to be a Zoom meeting, which I'm, I don't know why we have to have a Zoom meeting, but
Well, I think it's hybrid. I think you can be in person and you can be on Zoom.
I, I see the, the Serpide had a productive meeting with superintendent Aubin. Has nothing to do with repurposing the old high school.
Right.
That's, it's, it came in, I just figured I'd give the whole update. It was included in his email. I wasn't sure if it would be of any benefit.
What are we doing? Okay.
I have a report from Michael that goes over the grants update, so I'll read that into the record. For the Buzzards Bay National Estuaries Program, two sub, two applications were submitted. One to Buzzards Bay NEP grant programs. Application number one is for assistance with municipal separate stormwater system MS4 investigations. This is $25,000 request and it would help the town identify source pollutants entering the groundwater and help determine where infrastructure upgrades are needed. Application number two, we're currently preparing with Buzzards Bay Coalition and is for $290,000 of a request for the design of a community nitrogen-reducing septic system for the lead. The area includes 58 single-family homes and the Basai Restaurant. The funds would be used to develop the engineered designs and assess the cost effectiveness of the system. The town would then need to decide whether it has the capacity to move forward with permitting, construction, and operations. The MVP 2.0, we were selected to protect, to participate in the MVP in the MVP 2.0 program and were awarded ninety-five thousand dollars for program implementation. The first phase of this project is for revisiting climate resilience priorities with a focus on social resilience and engaging with populations that are more vulnerable, such as Westport's Environmental Justice Neighborhood. The second phase will fund a small pilot project. The pilot project will be identified using the results of the grant program's first phase. And that's for forty-five thousand dollars. I think the first phase is fifty-five. And this, the first phase is fifty, the second phase is forty-five. Congressional appropriations requests. Worked with Bob Daler to submit the five-point-five million dollar Senate appropriations request for Senators Warren and Markey's offices to fund the Route Six sewer project. The Senate Appropriations Committee did not select our project in the bill that was approved in the committee late last month. However, Representative Keating's office recommended the town for nine-hundred-fifty-nine thousand dollars, seven-hundred-and-fifty-two for the sewer project. The House Appropriations Committee approved that bill. This will then need to make its way through the Congress. Next comes a vote from the House of Representatives and then follows, then following there is typically reconciliation with the Senate's bill. The SNEP Network, the Stormwater Planning Series, we're working with the Westport Land Conservation Trust to apply to this program. And our application is selected, the town will receive a free design of a green stormwater infrastructure project. The program also includes trainings for town staff for help with identifying low-cost stormwater solutions. And Chris Capone has identified a drainage ditch on Gifford Road on land that the city of Fall River owns next to Forge Pond. Him and Russ Moran of the Westport Land Conservation Trust think it's a good candidate for a nature-based stormwater solution because it discharges into the east branch of the Westport River. The city of Fall River is supportive of the project and will provide support letter. Route Six rezoning. A number of us met with Ross from BSC Group on July twenty-sixth to discuss the public engagement session presentation. The engagement event will be oriented around getting public feedback on what participants like and don't like in the rezoning framework. And we will be meeting in late August to finalize the presentation. For the Main Road Streetscape Plan, we're working on interviewing residents and business owners in the project locus area. The purpose of these interviews is to have a one-on-one conversation with area stakeholders about what the kind of improvements they would like to see in the neighborhood and what their thoughts are on the change or what their thoughts on change are. After the interviews are completed, we'll be moving forward onto forming a working group and then begin public engagement. For the Housing Production Plan, the Housing Production Plan survey period closed on August first. Serpide is in process of the survey results and then we'll draw housing goals and strategies based on the survey feedback and assessment of housing needs data.
Okay, is that a Westport laptop? Is that a new laptop?
Yes, these are our.
Three-year-old new ones.
Desktop laptops, yes.
Oh, desktop laptop.
Well, they, they just click into our desktop, but this is our computer.
There was a phrase here which is new to me, Michael used. Westport's Environmental Justice Neighborhood?
Yes. There, there are neighborhoods either by their economic situation or their racial makeup qualify as, quote, environmental justice. So the, 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 the purpose of that is, is that poor neighborhoods are frequently the recipients of landfills and things that nobody wants. So they're, so under the new regulations and particularly under MEPA, you, you have to assess the impact of any project on, in quotes, environmental justice. And, and we have a census tract in North Westport that is not a racial block, but economically depressed block. And, and so it's, it's for income. It's mostly elderly people and mostly living on very fixed incomes. And, and also the flip side of, we can't do them any harm. The flip side of that is if you, if you help them, you can get, you can step up your debt forgiveness under loans or you stand up, you step up in the grant rating. So that's the, that's the purpose and we have such a community.
Nice.
They lump, all those, all those things under the term environmental justice.
So the census block that I think shows that, that, that area of Westport earns less than sixty-eight percent of the Massachusetts mean. So that's, that's low. And it's one of the lowest on the South Coast, even considering Fall River in the bedroom. So it's, so we have to think about, not only it might help us get grants to do it, but how do we, if we do water and sewer, how?
How could?
How, how can we ask them for betterments when they can't afford anything? So we have to figure out how to pay for them.
It's, so is, is, as we understand that communities largely older people, many of them own their homes, but they bought them a long time ago and essentially their, their, their net worth is, is a real shame.
So have, are the folks in this, this neighborhood that's been identified, are they, they're aware of this? And have they been sort of informed that maybe there's, can be some help on the way?
Well, we have to figure out where the help could be coming from.
Yeah.
And I think when we do the MVP 2.0, we're going to be engaging with that community.
And, and right, right now, the piece of sewer that we're, we're pursuing doesn't, doesn't quite reach that. So this, this is a critical, this is a critical first link to actually make the connection to Fall River. Moving into the neighborhoods is, is an immediate subsequent step.
However, the Board of Health's letter did reach those neighborhoods. Those are many of my constituents that, we actually had some of them crying. They, they, they read this letter and tell them that they got to get out and they got to design this and they got to re, put the septic in.
I was just talking to somebody today who got one of those letters. Doesn't live up in that area, lives in the middle of Westport. And she just got the letter, she wasn't following anything else in the news or anything.
Most people didn't know anything about it.
And, you know, she's retired, living on a fixed income. Even though she isn't up there, she's down here. And she says thirty thousand dollars within two years. I guess I can do it, but I mean, it's like.
Yeah, I ran out my street across from that combo. They just put one in, existing house, little mound in the backyard, sixty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, geez.
It's one of these people, she's retired, I think a teacher from town.
There's got to be a better way. Especially right there, because they're going to get sewer. I mean, why, why ask them to do it now? You know, it, it, the five-year thing is an arbitrary timeframe. It doesn't have to be.
No, I mean, even the state, when the state was talking about those regulations, I mean, it's, it's, it's our plan. We have the plan that's correct and, and we can, you know, it's going to take us twenty years to get everything. But some of these little neighborhoods, they've already waited thirty years.
Right.
So, you know, especially with water. I mean, they get, they're afraid, that, you know, a lot of these people, they're elderly and they're afraid. And, and they're forcing, it's actually that letter's forcing people to sell their houses.
Yeah.
I mean.
And the, the problem is, we met with some real estate lady that told us what's happening up there. There are REITs buying up these properties that people are forced to sell.
Yep.
And now they're renting them out for numerous amounts of money. They're taking the ownership to Arizona or San Diego or wherever.
I get a letter once a month if one of them companies trying to.
Buy your house, yeah. So I don't know what we do about that, but we have to think about it because it's really going to change the nature of this, this town over time. If you have people investing in properties just to rent them out and being absentee landowners, it is not terribly good.
Title V gave them the right to stay, you know, and our integrated water plan also, you know, that's what kind of gets me a little bit with, with the Board of Health regulation. Our integrated water plan, we spent money with Kleinfeld to do this plan. They, they said what we should target as far as Title V goes. Those, you know, that person's, she's actually grandfathered until she sells her house to do that.
Absolutely.
And it's not a, an environmental disaster if that eighty-year-old woman's septic is a legion field and the soil conditions that are in the north end. So, and, and what happens is when, when that does happen, when she passes away, gets old and somebody, a younger family moves in and the upgrades get made and the neighborhoods change and it's the next stage. And I mean, I think that's what's happening and hopefully with, what we're working on with zoning and stuff, we'll keep that moving along.
So I, I really think we need to have a meeting with.
The Board of Health. My big thing is that I know a lot of these people. I mean, I have one right on my lane way and I know it's not affecting anything, so it's. And I think he's moving to try to get it done and, and I'm like.
So I, I think that actually from the state's standpoint, if you have a cesspool, until, if it isn't failed, you're okay until you sell the house. You can have it forever.
And the Board of Health's, the Board, the Board of Health's, you know, because they keep saying the Board of Health has this power, but it's public health threat. So, and they, they, before that regulation, they had that power to put these nitrogen systems in if they determined there was a public health threat.
Right.
And, and they could move forward to do that. So these aren't, if they're not a public health threat, why are we harassing these, these people?
Well, if they're not requiring people to get a nitrogen delimiting system if they have a cesspool, just the Title V system.
Well, mostly, many of these over there that have already been done, they've put nitrogens because now they test, they test the water.
Test the well, yeah.
So then the well comes up and they say, no. But then they don't tell them anything about how do you fix your well.
Right.
You know, and, and I know one that's five hundred feet from where the water main ended thirty years ago.
So is that sixty-five thousand dollar system, a nitrogen-reducing system?
Yes. So, and, and there's this other one that's five hundred feet from, from the, from the water main. So, so the individual that bought it, it was, it was, it was one of those cases that the family passed away during COVID. The neighbor actually took care of them, so the family went, they bought the house and they're keeping it as a rental next door. So when they come in, now he has a new, he has a new Title V system in the back in his house. So they're going to, figure they're going to do the same thing on this. They come in, they do the perk. One of the, one of our good engineers that come before us puts, puts the, you know, they come, well, you got to do a D-Nite system. So he puts forward the, the D-Nite system. And the D-Nite system had a water separate, a separation to the water table, less than Title V. But that, that's why they created these innovative systems.
Right.
So then the Board of Health said, oh, no, you've got to follow the five for, for Title V. And the reason they had to do the D-Nite is because the well in the house that he already owned was contaminated. But that well was five feet off of the Mass Highway layout. I mean, that's why that well was contaminated. So now they made him design a retaining wall around this thing in his front yacht. You know, so these are the kind of, it's kind of like working in the wrong direction. And one of the more reasons why we need a town engineer to try to work these things out. I understand they have the power for a public health threat, but let's not make people spend money. How much money did we spend already in that neighborhood that we're going to be looking to get betterments from people? So, so like one of my fellow selectmen says, he applauds all the seniors that have gone forward and done this. I said, okay, so these seniors moved forward and done this and five years, the sewer goes by their house. Now, how were you applauding them now when it was something that they didn't have to do? That's all they want to try to fix. But I, I mean, we did, I thought we had made some headway with getting Phil to come in and.
I thought so too.
Is that happening or?
Michael was, was talking with Matt about, I don't know what's happened. But we need, at least we need to get Phil, Matt and the people in the office to sit down together. At the very least, I don't think we have to do it in a public meeting.
No, I think Matt was open to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it helps him to, I mean, he's got his.
Yeah, he's busy up there.
He's got his hands full, yeah. So, anyway, that's the planners' report correspondence.
All that we have for correspondence is a public hearing notice from the zoning board for administrative appeal to the cease and desist for Fifty Spinner Kerr Way, which is the, the property that's operating as an Airbnb.
So how can they get a cease and desist? We don't have anything that says you can't.
The building inspector issued a cease and desist saying that they cannot, that short-term rental is not allowed in the residential and agricultural zoning district.
Not sure, I'm not sure that we have that.
Well, I don't know, I thought it was going to.
That is, well, that's part of what we're going to be.
Right, right.
Yeah, the committee's going to dig into now, this is trying to re-codify this.
I think the zoning board found that it could be permitted and the building inspector overturned it and now it's being appealed.
So I'm trying to go back, I, I think the town council told Roger that because it's not listed as a specific use, it is not allowed. But I don't know if that was something else or if that was that.
I think I heard something like that too. And I think the whole work, rework in the zones to try to fix that.
Yeah, that whole section of the uses needs to be revamped.
Okay. Minutes from June thirteenth.
Well, to be honest, I don't have perfect recollection of these minutes of what was, what hap, what did happen at these meetings. So as I read through it, it seems to be all in order, but somebody else may have picked up some.
No, I just, I just, I did the same thing and I would, if that was a motion, I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. June twenty-seventh, minutes.
I do recall this discussion and I've looked at the minutes and I would move that we approve them.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes of July eleventh.
Yes, so I, I do have better recollection in my. Yes, so I, I do have better recollection and my, uh, my motion is that we approved, that we accept these minutes.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Invoices, WB Mason, $14.34 for binders.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the invoice, RW Mason.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Short, long-term planning discussions?
We're still at it.
We're still at it. Okay, I don't have anything new to add to that.
I'll just, I'll say that we did get an email today, um, Michael and I, for the first MVP 2.0 cohort meeting for September 21st, from 1 to 3 at Serpid in Tonkin. It's hybrid, but...
Okay, so Serpids gonna do the MVP?
Um, yeah.
Have we signed the contract with them?
I know it's, it's through Courtney Roca is the one that sent us the invite.
Okay, so it's...
It's held at Serpid.
Okay, so we haven't hired the Serpids or anybody for that, to, to help us with that?
Mr. Chair, so could, could, we get Amy to look into, um, the, this stormwater design for Watapa that's supposedly in the works are done or... Just get a hold of Jimmy, Jimmy's, I think Jimmy just reached out, um, to get it. I'm not sure if it was UMass that did it.
Okay.
But there's some kind of plan for something down up around Tickle Road.
Really? Is part of the overall help Watapa pond? I thought they said most of it was stuff dumped in the pond.
Historical, yeah. But I imagine we still have...
From the Currie Mill, pardon?
Yeah, Dave's Beach, Dave LaBurch, Sucker Brook Reclamation, which I haven't talked to Paul Furlan recently, but I'd like to see how that's going out. That'd be a big, big plus for the Watapa. They reclaimate that, the Bleachery Ponds and all that stuff that was up in that area. And Tiverton's doing a stormwater plan too. So I imagine that's, this study must have designed those plans for them and that's who was working on the reclamation for the Sucker Brook and Tiverton's, well, that was the gas company, historical dumping up in that area. Sinai and all kinds of other wonderful things.
So I wonder what's happened in Marigazet Bay with the, the dyers in Mass, in Fall River that are right on the banks of the bay.
Well, I think, I think most, I think most of that's encapsulated in the bottom of the Tonkin River cause we haven't dredged it in a very, very long time. But I think that might be what Little Compton's worrying about when Tiverton coming up with the cable. Um, you got Providence, you got Buzz, you know, that, that, Maho Base. I mean, all, everything's open for Cohog and now that, you know, further down, that was closed for years.
You know, I, my family comes from small textile villages, but you have a big textile city like Fall River, right on the Quichashen River where it dumps right into the bay.
Quick, you know, Fall River, you can't see the river, it's on the, it's in every one of the mills.
It's all in pipe.
That's how they power the mills. They power the mills.
That's why, that's why, that's why it's called Fall River. But, you know, Fall River really didn't exist until they started developing it for, for the textile industry.
And we had the two power plants, so Amy knows. One was your family's neighbor for a long time.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Shell Oil, that's another hot site over there.
Everybody in favor? Okay.